All right, apparently it is five o'clock, so I'll call our special, regular special agenda-setting meeting to order. And since we take no business, I don't think we have to take rule at this time, right?
No.
Yep, all right, so then I'll put it over the city administrator who will walk us through our agenda items.
And I'll turn it right back to the mayor, who's going to give the library update.
Well, I'd better be delegated by you. First of all, again, Jen's been through just a very challenging period of time in her life, the loss of her father, and we certainly sympathize with her on that, but her daughter is coming home, I guess, from the hospital, and so she rightfully has her priorities in order and is taking care of her family matters first. So in place of, but by no means a substitute for Jen, I'll read this. First, thank you to the city and everyone for their support and care with the passing of my father. I truly appreciate you all. The library will be hosting a Diamond Art Day this Saturday, the ninth. This is an adult-only program, though children are welcome to utilize the children's area while the adults are doing their project. This will be during open hours that now on Saturday are from 10 to 2:00. We're participating in the Holatid Heritage Festival on Saturday, December 16, which I believe actually starts a little bit on Friday, too, right, on Friday, the 15th. We're offering make-and-take ornaments for both children and adults. There will also be during, that will also be during the open library hours from 10 to 2:00. The Arrowhead Library System, along with 321 art studios, is offering handmade toy take-and-makes this month. This is fully or partially funded by the Minnesota Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund. These are offered on a first-come, first-served basis, and we'll offer one per household while the supplies last. We've been busy working on changing things up. We just finished transitioning our movie section, which is now color-coded, to align with genres for ease of selecting while browsing. The library staff is closing out the year and finishing up any loose ends and projects. We plan on doing even more improvements and additions next year, and a happy holidays to everyone.
With closing of that, I guess, move on to some staff updates, so we can start with Mr. Carney, if you've got anything for us.
Yeah, the real estate thing, just so we're clear, on Shearing, that was recorded a long time ago. The county said it might be a partial split, and so I've been debating with them. I'll come back with a definitive answer at the final meeting, so Councillor Joffe knows where we're at, but it was recorded and went to Mr. Shearing over a year ago, so it is in his name, okay? The other one is the purchase from Nygaard. In looking at that a little more closely, there may need to be a corrective deed from the individuals that conveyed it to Mr. Nygaard, and so I'll follow up with that with Administrator Hekela. Nothing else at this time.
Thank you.
Well, Josh Steer, our municipal engineer from Baltimore.
Yeah, thanks, Luke. A couple of updates. Pine Grove Park, the contractor was there just before Thanksgiving and tidied up. They added some aggregate around the new concrete just so people can, it's not a trip hazard essentially, but just a reminder, they're going to pave that next spring. Tlisha, I do have an action item to follow up at school to coordinate softball schedule, I think was a concern you had, just to make sure when they show up to pave, we're not interfering with activities.
Thank you.
So I am tracking that. CDBG 2024, we worked with staff to get that grant application in, so the project is fixing the pavement cracking on Central Avenue, and then potential chip seal along Erie Street as well, so trying to get the ride quality improved, and that's like the likely detour for the 2026 county project, and so just knowing there's going to be a lot of traffic.
Couldn't help but improve it, yeah, very good.
It's, it's pretty bad, but overall, the pavement's in good shape, it's just those
Yeah, service cracks.
Service cracks, so.
And the manholes, yeah.
And the manholes. Essentially, what we're proposing is like a three- or four-foot strip mill, take it down to the gravel, rebuild it, and pave it smooth. So, like Luke was saying, I think it's water main service trenches where it's settled, and so I think once we make this correction, we'll be good, good long-term, so. Likely, we'll be chip sealed as well in 2025, is what we're thinking, and so then once we chip seal it, you won't even know we lashed anything, so. Let's see, next item, Third Avenue feasibility report, so we're working on that. That's the Alley sewer project, so the plan is to bring that feasibility report to council in January, so with that, there'll be a presentation and walking through the project and whether it's feasible from a technical level, so. The next item, First Avenue reconstruct, so that was authorized by council this summer for final design. We submitted the Mindot Loco Road Improvement Grant. Is that Monday?
Sunday?
Friday.
Friday.
So that's a grant application to Mindot for up to $1.5 million. Only surface restoration items are eligible, so the pavement, concrete, that type of stuff, utilities are not eligible. But I think we have a strong application. It's likely, they're, they're going to get probably a couple hundred applications, so they have a million-dollar pot. The max award is one and a half million, so they'll do probably 80, 90 project selections, so I think we'll be.
Hundred million pot?
Yep.
What did I say?
One million.
Sorry.
I think it's 103, technically, so one and a half max. Typically, they do the max award projects. There's a few better or less, but we'll get all or nothing. We asked for one and a half. We either get that or we don't. They don't typically do partial awards. But I think we have a strong application and told a good story.
What did we estimate that, for a big costing?
About three million.
About three million. Could be done for less?
Yeah, potentially, maybe two and a half. We do have a contingency factor built in there, but not knowing construction here, too, that, I mean, we're hoping 2025 that that will play into it as well.
We do also have 11 copper grand dollars, about 350,000, something like that, I think, so that'll help with the service line replacements, and those are to the house, too, those aren't just to the curb stuff, those are full service line replacements, so.
On tonight's agenda is approval to authorize for RFP for C Mar on the side of our project. And so what that is, is that it's just to put an advertisement out to have construction companies basically bid to be our construction manager at risk. So we're not committed to anything, it's just getting the advertisement out there. Preliminary, I think it'll be a three, four-week advertisement. We're bumped up to the holidays, so I don't want to do like a mid-break opening. I'd rather do something after the holidays to give them time to prepare. So likely, we would receive RFPs the first week of January. We'd review them, and then there'd be an interview process with that as well, with the goal of having a C Mar construction manager at risk onboard by mid-February-ish, by some interview process. So we can still start working on the design piece in the background and start with preliminary design.
So the C Mar precedes then the action we're going to take, a RFQ?
Well, it's the RFP or RFQ?
R. They're, they're the same thing?
Yes.
It's different?
Uh, they're different. So RFQ is request for qualifications, RFP is request for proposal. We're going to do them concurrently. You can do them separately, so we could do an RFQ process and basically say, submit your resume, are you qualified to bid on this project? And then we would do an RFP, which gets into the finer details. That would take probably another month, so we're going to do it as one solicitation. The advantage of that is it shortens the timeframe. The disadvantage is you have more proposals to review. So if we do the RFQ, you know, basically, are you competent to do this project? If you are, or no, you're not.
So we should say RFP rather than RFQ, or does it matter?
I default to the attorney.
It sounds like you're doing two, so.
Should we do RFP slash Q?
Yes.
Okay.
So we get to that action item on the agenda, we make it a little broader there.
Yep, okay.
Yep.
Also with that, not to interrupt, but we will take any interest in member from the council or mayor that would like to sit on the scoring committee. My thought is we'll have the public works supervisor, myself, and then one that's mostly a public.
Or you've probably got the most experience on that, Dr. K.
Okay.
Interviews are typically an hour, and then that'd probably be three or four. We have to act legally per statute, get three proposals. If we don't get three proposals, we have to go through the process again to meet the C Mar statutory requirements. So with that, 201, work with the attorney along the way, just to make sure we're checking all the boxes for public bidding law, so. Some other good news, earlier this summer, fall, we submitted to the PCA for some, some grant money, so we put in for a stormwater request to survey, evaluate the stormwater system throughout the city, so it's a comprehensive look at the citywide system, doing some hydraulic modeling. Ultimately, I want to get a, you know, if we started from scratch, what would all the pipe sizes be? So that way, as we're going along with construction projects, we know, if we're doing First Street that ties into, you know, this trunk line, you know, we don't want to put in too small a pipe with our project. We know, hey, we're going to eventually go upstream and we need a 36-inch pipe here. We can be proactive and get that infrastructure in the ground. So good news there. Also with that, they, so the total grant amount is $158,000. There's a 10% match, so about $16,000 of city money to receive that, but there also is some budget to do final design. I know there's a property owner, Derek Hirsch, with some stormwater concerns. Bill Crete had some, some concerns, and so this includes putting together construction plans to improve those properties, for drainage across those properties. Also, there was a third piece we included was drainage improvements on Pine Grove Park, so looking at stormwater storage upstream of that big crossing under Central Avenue, and then evaluating actual the structural integrity of the culvert as well, knowing it's probably not feasible to open cut a new pipe in there. We'd probably have to look at rehabilitating what's there, and so it's bringing in a structural engineer to evaluate that and provide recommendations, put together construction plans to, to make sure that's good for the next 100 years.
So that wouldn't be addressed in the Third Avenue reconstruction project, or that?
This would be the Central Avenue culvert, not.
The Central, oh, sorry.
Not the Third, yeah.
Yeah. The main one is getting addressed, or the one you're asking?
Yes, with, with the county projects, so. So that's, that's good news. So that'll take, that includes cost to survey it, design it, and bid it out, but does not cover any actual construction part of costs, so.
I don't want to make light of that. That's $160,000 grant. That'd be stinkable to $1,000 that done, and thanks to our engineering company for taking the reins on that. There's a lot of grants that I'll write, or Josh and I will tag team together, and I'm not taking credit for that one. I was the engineering firm that did that one, so.
It's highly competitive. I think they got 80 applications. They had about a million split out, and so we got 15% of that, so.
That just gives us another project that's shovel-ready and.
Exactly.
You're shovel.
Three.
Sure, three projects that are shovel-ready, so when money comes down the pipe, we're ready to go.
Exactly.
They're looking at us.
And the $16,000, we have that available?
That'll be in the 2024 budget that you'll look at approving tonight, so.
That's, that's all I have.
Lots of back to them.
Yeah.
If I could interject, the county project that's coming on the street and around the Main Street, is that next year or the year after?
2026.
2026, yeah.
How do you do with the sidewalks and everything, or?
Lights.
Sidewalk, it's a full, full reconstruct.
Oh.
So they'll go down to the dirt and put it back together.
What, how long is that going to be tied up?
So I think they, they said a year. I want to do it in one year. I think it's a stretch, but if you got a, a big contractor like you wanted or something in here, I mean, they'll get it done.
It'd be like the Bywellman Project was, basically.
Better.
No, I'm talking to mine, right? I'm not talking to quality.
No, they're, they're, we thought two years. They said that they think they can do it in one. That's their goal, is to do it in one.
I mean, if they, they say it, they, I mean, they will. Probably would pay a premium to do it, but.
Thank you.
Let's see, other agenda questions, additions. Actually, Luke, you need to give us an update on the East Range Trail Powers Board, since I was out of town.
Oh, the East Range Trail Powers Board, yeah, they gave their strategic planning. I guess the East Range Trail Powers Board came up with a strategic plan, and that was the meat and potatoes of, of the meeting. Doug and myself and, you know, other members of the community went up to the Loina Community Center, and we sat up at all day and talked about what the next three years looks like. We came to the mission statements and core values and things like that. Actually, they put together a really nice write-up, a five-page pamphlet on that. I get a lot of questions surprisingly still to this day. What does the East Range Trail Powers do? What are they for? Do we get our money's in the form of them? So that's a really nice write-up if anyone's looking for that information. There was a gal who presented on the Inner Range Tourism Board and some things that they're looking to do to try and draw up more interest this way, specifically the whole range, but you know, the East Range. And we brought up a couple of things that they weren't aware of, such as the vintage sled ride that the fire department does, that, you know, covers the whole area.
No, it's, um, the Legion does now.
The Legion does now?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yep, Legion took that over. So, yeah, so that sled ride, they, they weren't aware of that being over here, so they want to try and get somebody over to pick some drilling shots and some, some things on that. Less again, and they want to do a better job of promoting that, so really just trying to focus on not just winter, but other, other things that they can kind of draw up some, some ideas for. Surprisingly, all of the mayors were gone, so was the three administrators sitting in, and we got through it, but.
I appreciate your efforts there collectively, and yeah, that strategic planning process is worth looking at. It was a prediction for a three-year plan.
Yep.
Really, and broken down not just to the objectives, but also the steps to implement, yeah, with timetables and everything. So, yeah, it's at least a valid attempt at a plan for the whole East Range, and I think when we had the strategic plan, we came away, Luke and I did, feeling that, you know, the seeds had been planted for other East Range cooperative efforts, which many of us have been working on, whether it's police, or ambulance, or the water project, or other things, and, yeah, just finding that it can result in some economies of scale, and I think is a much healthier attitude than there might have been when the schools were consolidating, you know, and that was such a pioneering effort. Yeah, I was quite encouraged by the way that it was conducted, yeah.
Yeah, I would echo that. I, I feel like never before has the communities wanted to prepare and share and partner, and I just feel from councils to staff on the element, everybody's just ready for it and open-minded to it all, when it makes sense, so.
Uh, councillors, other matters maybe we could talk about, or?
I can run through the list, too, here, if you'd like.
Yeah, maybe reviews on board of the agenda.
Yep. The tobacco and cannabinoid licenses will be tabling tonight. Our police chief has not been available the last week to, to go through and get all these ready, so we'll be tabling these for the next meeting. Celebrated Aurora member at large request, Lindsay did that. It can be staff, it can be council, getting really, Lindsay said she goes to the meetings and she wouldn't mind being in again, but she's also said if somebody else really felt passionate about it and wanted to step up, she wouldn't argue that either, so left that up to council, if somebody wanted to be on there, otherwise she'll, she'll do it.
And I can attest, she's a valued member of the group there. She lends her usual buoyant energy into the projects there, so.
But she's, and she was willing? She would, yep.
Okay, all right.
Well, yeah, so you have about 15, 20 minutes to think on that one, so.
Okay.
The Celebrated Aurora gambling proceeds request. What we've done in the past, excuse me, is, uh, we've done two motions in the past, one for Celebrated Aurora for 2,500, one for Pumpkin Fest for 2,500, the thought process. Maybe changing, we go back to one and just say, here's, you know, if you want to do a lot of $5,000, here's $5,000 for all of your events, and however you want to spend it, you spend it. I would recommend, if you, if you approve it tonight, I'll approve it continuing down it being expenditure in 2024, because we've already allocated the, the funds this year. So we do have $19,000 in there, whatever amount of money that you guys wanted to donate to them, but maybe you just want to do it once and be done with it, and just note all that, if you'd also comment on that or anything.
Yeah, I don't know, any thoughts? Either way, it goes into the kidneys. I don't think the Celebrated Aurora budget is tight, you know, so it, we're allocated from the meetings I attended. I don't think that would short like the July 3rd available funds for the Pumpkin Fest, but administratively, it all goes into the same yearly budget.
Can we then be a gold member, or in the past have we been a silver member, or not even a silver?
Well, in the past, well, all I can speak to is my time here, where we've given 2,500 to the 4th of July, 2,500 to Pumpkin Fest, so.
Were we listed, what, what kind of sponsor were we listed as?
I don't, I don't know.
We could, we might go for the gold, or?
Well, I was thinking that, like, going forward, say, the Legion and Care for Kids comes and asks for, currently, we're, those charitable gambling organizations are putting in a 10% on already pretty hefty taxes that they pay for those nonprofits, and they ask for less of a tax than what would it be like to give out $5,000. But right now, we have it and haven't changed it, so I would be as supportive. It's going forward, if there was a change in that percentage, because they're creepy.
Is that in our control?
Yes, it is our control. We set that amount.
And the reason it was put in is because the dollars were leaving town, you know, so all the dollars are sticking around here.
100% of the dollars are sticking around here, good.
Well, that's on our agenda there.
Yep, that's on the agenda, yep. Just real simple, the meeting dates are on there for next year, so.
I corrected ones.
The corrected ones. The insurance premiums, this is, this is not for union members, this is for non-union staff. There's four of us in that group, and if they came back at around 7%, which is about what we budgeted for, the good news is the dental premiums didn't go up, so I mean, for our budget for this year, we're at a washer to the good, actually, we're better than what we thought, so. So that's to be approved tonight. 2023 property tax levy, and this one here, I guess we'll give some time to this. We had our truth in taxation meeting, which you all were at. We had presented at 5%. What we have in the resolution funding is 3%, so even though it's a dollar in all bets around, I believe it's $1,500,000 or $500,000 and change, that indicates a 3% adjustment, and again, each percent is roughly $15,000 from, from last year. This is, so it'd be an increase of about $45,000. So it kind of, when I was laying out doing this, I kind of had thought I would meet with department heads to score it one more time, have a working meeting with, with you all, special meeting for rates and this, and then dug it, just felt that you guys were comfortable with 3%, so it's up here for you to consider tonight. I'm certainly okay with approving the 3% tonight if that's what you want to do, and then I can meet with staff afterwards and just kind of discuss what's in there. The other thing we need to discuss is rates, because we do have to adjust our rates quite a bit. So I don't know if you guys want to think about doing a, a working meeting, where we can talk the budget that you approved and what's in there now, or if you guys were comfortable with what we had talked about already, what's in there. It's really open for discussion, whatever you guys are comfortable with and want to talk about, but the levy is pretty good, 3%, I think. It's just the rates we really have to sit and talk about.
Real quick, were you able to talk to all the department heads, or everybody's comfortable with that? I think, I thought I heard there was one department head that did not discuss with you.
So I haven't, honestly, I've not sat down and talked with all of them, like specifically gone through their budget after the, the meeting beforehand. I've been talking to little bits and things that have popped up, I've been putting in there. The fire chief is the only one that's sat down with myself right now.
Okay.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with it right now, where we're at. Everything pretty much that we've talked about is, and there's some new things that popped up, or like the $16,000 stormwater grant. We didn't, we didn't know that, so I had to add that and update that and put that in there. So there's things like that that come up that we move around and, and play with some things.
In the holiday season, I was hoping we could avoid a special meeting, that's what I was thinking, and, and just personally, I thought when we, we set the federal minimum levy, we do it prudently, right, in case we get aside, direct from the side on some unusual expenditure, which apparently didn't occur, so it was, obviously, it's up to us as a council to decide that, but it seemed like we might be positioned to be able to take care of that. And then we do have to have the discussion on rates, which.
Where I'm at right now, in, in our budget worksheet, $1,590,000 budget, I think our expenditures to, to revenues is off by $3,000, so, I mean, that's pretty damn close.
And what's the timeframe that's got to be reported, your levy?
Well, I mean, we've got time for the next one, um, the 19th is the next meeting, so we could set it tonight, and I'm pretty comfortable with what's set. Where I'm not comfortable is rates. We need to adjust, adjust our rates.
Those need to be done before the end of this summer?
Oh, yeah. I would suggest we need to do those next meeting. I mean, that's, that's where, I don't know if you want to talk about.
And if, do you push them up to January?
Well, then you're going to miss, we would have, the reason we would want to do it is so we can start it on January 1, because you have, you have a couple weeks notice, right? So if we did that, January 19th, we'd, we'd cover that two weeks before the January 1 implementation.
And it can't be implemented after January?
It can, it's just that you're not going to count on, you're not going to a whole month of revenue in there from the increase, so you can absolutely do that, it's just your one, you know, one fall.
Sure. The other, the other thing, by delaying the rate increase a little bit, would might have from the water project, a little more focused impression of how much the town away, or are going to have to borrow based on the new, the new calculations there, and, you know, and it's part of a process I can see evolving during 2024 of how we keep the community informed, how we make informed decisions, and balance out the budgets or projections that we have for the enterprise funds, right, so.
Yeah, so I guess that's just the big thing, is how you guys want to handle the rates, because right now, the wastewater treatment, wastewater fund, I guess it's all included, included, is what, $160,000 underfunded, and the water fund is about $50,000, $60,000 underfunded, so.
What are you recommending to go up the rates?
Uh, right now, it'd probably be about $10 a month.
So that would be at 130?
130, 130.95.
And the HOI rates just went up to 160?
I, I'd like to do the due diligence of showing why, you know, running some ads and showing where it's at. Part of that is a trap, like the wastewater rates would go about $7 a month, and that's what, that's what the assist of a $75,000 cash transfer from our account hopefully gets through this one, and the next year, we could look at maybe making that a little bit less. The majority of it is utilities, and again, again, we were underfunded $88,000 for last year, so we ran in the red $88,000, so that's a big part of it.
So our second meeting in a month, we could still time late, having a major, I'm sorry.
No, I said all those times last year, I kept pointing that out. I said, we are in the red, we are in the red. Nobody would listen.
So that's part, part of what we could do. Another thing is, is the, the watering is fairly simple. It's, it's mostly the bond, P and I, you know, we're shored on, but that bill, $3, and we're probably going to be setting ourselves up to help, some of that will be going towards the water treatment plant. Not all of that, you know, I don't get that out there, but it'll help us out to get, close that gap a little bit. But the wastewater end is where we're truly hurting, and most of it's bond, P and I. Some of the good news there is about the 160-some thousand are short. Some of it is the sludge truck, we've got some capital stuff in there, and we can pull from that, because we will get a bond, we'll, I'm sorry, we'll get a grant from the wastewater treatment plant, so we can take some of that money to offset it, and then we could do a cash transfer, and then we could just do the $75,000 rate increase, which would be about $7 a month, so. So you're looking at about 10, seven to wastewater, three to.
So, uh, council, do you want a separate meeting, or should we, if we can handle it on our second meeting?
I think we can handle it on our second meeting.
So.
Okay, all right. Sounds good on that, and we're getting relatively close, right?
Yeah, so if that's good enough for now, we can talk about the rest during the meeting.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
I want to pause support.
Moved and supported, called as a favor.
I'm back.
Opposed, all right, we stand adjourned for the next two minutes.